Tiffany, are we still waiting on anyone?
Not that I can tell. I think we're ready to go. At four thirty, we will be ready.
All right, well, it is officially four thirty. And as you all can tell, I am not Bishop Scott. He is traveling tonight, and so he's asked me to chair the meeting instead. And I'm happy to sit in. With that, I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll say, Stefan, will you take the role?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Blackman.
Present.
Commissioner Huff.
Present.
Commissioner Monti.
I'm here.
Commissioner Orman.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Present.
Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott. We have a quorum.
Perfect. First item on the agenda is public comment, and as I understand, we have a few.
Our first individual public comment is Mr. James Moody.
Thank you very much for spending any time to talk. And the only comment I wanted to make was about the Trent Court properties. I moved here about five years ago, I'm a teacher, and had been living in a rented accommodation downtown. My family, my friends from North Carolina, I've not been here for five years there, and I know it. As everybody knows, the housing prices have become ridiculous. And I understand that the Trent Court properties is up in the air. And I confess my ignorance, I don't know a lot of what's going on. But I understand some of it's to be turned down. And I suppose some of it, it's questionable as to what's gonna happen to it. I would just like to put out the idea that those are some wonderful units that some of us would be interested in buying, I think. Purchasing units that are livable. For those of us who are in that bracket of intern where you're doing some public service, that where the housing in this area is just way out of bounds for people like firefighters and police officers. I would imagine, in the tight housing market, that some of those, if they're going to, you know, be demolished or sold off, or whatever's gonna happen to them, that there might be some type of hybrid plan made so that the units that could be lived in could be sold to people like myself, who would be happy to renovate those, not to holiday makers and vacation makers and developers, who want to probably raise that property and build million-dollar homes, which is, I understand that, and I appreciate that. But, or perhaps the sector of people living in Washington, New Bern, who are not able to afford that type of housing, but who want to still remain part of the community that is New Bern. I love those units. I mean, I lived in Inverton a while, and I lived in places just like that. And they developed a program where they did have a lot of public housing like that, but they eventually decided to sell those off to the people who were living in them. Since it is a public housing, perhaps at less than market values and rates, and it still maintains that idea of a public housing to some degree. And yet, the ownership of the properties, I think, would give people like myself an incentive to maintain those properties and, you know, to keep them up. I would give, I would really appreciate the opportunity to own something like that myself. Being in the profession that I am, as a teacher, you know, single as well, not married, not two incomes, that's getting more and more out of my reach, being able to own a property. And I don't know how long the rental property is, you know, possible for where I live right now either. So I would just like to put that idea into your all, your planning or thinking, that there might be some type of middle way where if, and again, I don't know what your plans are for that property, but if there is some type of way that the units that can be said, or potentially as well, I think they're quite nice. You know, I'm, I suppose, not the traditional American, where I think small and manageable, and then most people like to have their own single dwelling houses with their gardens and everything, but I would give a lot to be able to own something like that.
That's your four minutes, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next person to speak is Mr. Freddie Bill. If you ask Mr. Bill if he would sit here. Freddie Bill. Freddie Bill. Hey, Mr. Bill, we'll go ahead and start your time now. You can sit or stand, however you like.
Yeah, but it's a petition that we got together for that we can keep Boba as the night monitor at the tower. Because I think a lot of people definitely realize, you know, Boba really do. At the tower, you know, like, a lot of times people have problems, you know, like, I think just last month, a guy was there, saw he wanted to cook late night, you know. A lot of smoke, he was probably had a lot of smoke in it, you know. So what Boba do, he'll go up there, every floor, let's find out which one, you know, is a need to help, you know. So one for him, that smoke probably would've gotten, you know. But we definitely want to keep Boba as a night monitor, you know. Yeah, we don't want nobody else to get, we just want Boba. That's who we want, yeah. But he do so much, man, beyond the power that he do, you know, he really do, you know. So.
And he's the signature?
Yes.
We'll give those to Tiffany.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Anything else?
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
I really appreciate you coming in and advocating.
Okay, all right. Thanks for listening to.
Of course. All right.
So next, we have Mr. Kevin Hill.
Talk and talk.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
What I'm coming to say, it's summertime now. And when people raise their windows up at the place, you got that chair right in the front. It's there at two, three o'clock at night, talking, real loud, people trying to sleep. Them, we trying to sleep, you know, that TV y'all guys real good in there. But you don't wanna hear that, and you're talking about people there. You know, it's supposed to be a family thing there, you know, it can get real nasty. And then, the last thing I want to say, the doors are slamming two, three o'clock at night down that hallway. We need some cameras or something, and so y'all can see who do what they want to. But you know that time of the night, what's going on. And that's about all I wanna say. I'm serious, because it's.
Thank you so much.
It's just so lit. You can't sleep, you can hear a door two, three, boom, boom, all night long. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and then, last person we have is Ms. Vanessa Lewis.
Well, she's on her way, and do we have any cameras at the tower?
On the first floor.
Hello, I'm Vanessa. I'm here on behalf, well, above. I'm not here to get his job back, ain't asked to get his job back. I'm just here to say it was done unprofessionally. Ms. Askewes did not call him, did not ask him what happened, just took the other resident's side without even asking. She went, she called Tasha. Tasha called Boba. Boba said, "What are you talking about?" Gave him a punishment, but I don't care about punishment neither. And Boba says, "I didn't say nothing or do nothing wrong." So that's why I'm here, just to let y'all know. She, to me, and to other residents, it was done unprofessionally. She should've asked Boba, called him, talked to him, or done something. Boba would've told him the truth, told him truth. Boba don't lie, he straight up. Mr. Monty, you know that, you've been knowing him for seven years.
On or not?
Yeah, longer than that. 'Cause that's one thing he hates, is somebody to lie. And the other incident residence, and us wants to know, why don't we have cameras yet? Because there was being drug deals right there in the parking lot, right there out front. Vehicles are being hit, mine, for one, was hit, and everybody knows where we parked at. And we can't, you know, law can't do nothing about it, 'cause there's no, there's no cameras. There were people staying there that shouldn't be there, husbands, sons. We can't prove it, because we had no cameras there. So I wanna know why. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
You're welcome.
Right, that's all we have for public comments.
All right. Unless there's other comments, we can move to staff comments.
That, Ms. Lewis is Boba's wife.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Oh, is that? Staff comment?
Yeah.
It's Latasha.
It's Latasha.
We can only see the half, the lower half of your face.
I know, it's my camera. I want, I want to say that, um, I kinda blame, I'm not kinda, I blame myself for, um, I was told to do something, and I didn't do it appropriately. Um, and so that's why the residents are upset. And I did, and I wanted to apologize that I shouldn't have said it differently. I feel that if it would've been said differently, then, um, it wouldn't be so upsetting. The whole incident would not occur with the resignation or anything. So I just want to blame myself for that.
I'm totally lost.
I am too.
Everything. Yeah, we, every closed session, we'll discuss personal issues there. Thank you, Tasha.
Okay, um, let's see, I do have a staff comment to make. Barbara Brown, she's our custodian here at the main office. She works Monday through Thursday from eight until twelve. She had a major operation today, and I just wanna have a moment of silent prayer or thoughts for her, if we can hear.
Yes.
Is it okay if I pray out loud?
Yes.
All right. I asked Ms. Askewes that earlier, and she said she'd leave it at my discretion. My discretion is to pray. That's right. Thank God we live in the South, that's right.
You're just New York, and you know that.
That is true. But let's pray for Ms. Brown. Lord, we just thank you that we, that we get to do the work that we get to do. And we ask right now for your hand of protection and for your presence to be real and to be felt with Ms. Brown. Lord, as she is a loyal staffer who comes in diligently, and she works for this organization, Lord, I pray right now that you would just bring her quick healing, quick recovery, and special shout out for Ms. Askewes' request that she could come back real, real quick, 'cause we miss her already. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Any other staff comments? All right, I think we go to the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as they have been emailed or presented, written or sent out. I've looked through them earlier, and they appeared to be what we did.
A second. I hear a second. All in favor, say aye. I think that's unanimous. Finance report?
Okay. Good evening, I will be covering the finance report ending March third of one twenty twenty-two. So we, Trent Court, we, left, right, the total operating revenue, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars. New Bern Towers, two hundred forty-three thousand, one hundred ninety dollars. Total consolidated, six hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars. Next page. The total, the total operating expenses for Trent Court, two hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred one dollars. CHI business activity, twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. New Bern Towers, two hundred twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars. Total consolidated, five hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars. Total revenue and operating expenses for Trent Court, one hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars. CHI business activity, a loss of twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. New Bern Towers, a total income of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred three dollars. Total consolidated, one hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. Total net income and loss for Trent Court, one hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars. Told for CHI business activity, a losses, twelve thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars. Total income for New Bern Towers, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred three dollars. And total solidated, one hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars. Any questions, comments, dissent?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the finance report as it has been given.
I hear a motion.
Second.
And second. All, all, all agree?
What's that word? I'm so small and fast.
Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose flag sign. It passes.
Commissioner Chairman, I would like to update that the resolution for the vehicle disposition was so gov.deal as of Thursday evening at two thirty-eight, in two thousand five, Florida State, for four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
For two thousand five.
Yeah, we were surprised that it sold that much. We're excited and happy. And so our buyer is John Watson out of Newton Grove, and he will be here Wednesday, and we will be exchanging the title and transferring. I'm sure go for Tiffany, we can have it.
Awesome. I think it's your floor, Ms. Askewes.
All right, thank you so much. So, tonight, I just wanna share a few things with you. First is the information item that I sent you all for the Trent Court lease, as I mentioned last, the last board meeting, that will be updated in the lease. And we have posted it for a thirty-day commenting review period. The thirty days closes on May the ninth, and we'll have a public hearing on May the tenth at four o'clock for anyone who don't, does not submit a written, a written comment, so that they can come in and voice any comment they would like. We are doing an update to the lease, update to the utility allowance for the Trent Court property, and also update to the maintenance charts list. And as Arlene shared, we're excited about the sale of our first vehicle. We have two trucks that will be placed in all gov. deals for sale as well. And we still have RFP out for unit terms. And we had RFP for lock here, which recently closed. And we are excited, because we have two workers from NC Works to join our team. We have Alicia Wilmot, she's the receptionist over at the New Bern Towers. And she is fitting in really well. I think the residents are excited about seeing her at the window. And then, we also have Sean Donleavy, he is with our maintenance staff. And he is an excellent worker on his very first day with us, he fixed the AC unit.
God bless him, keep him on.
He is a student at the Vault Center, and so we are so excited about having the both of them with us. And also, just to share with you, we had Easter egg hunts at the Towers and Trent Court. So Ms. Meadow, she put together a real nice presentation of our event. So I wanna share with you. So we have. Bear with me, I'm trying to get it so I can, okay. So we have, we had a staff Easter egg hunt here in the office. And so we had a golden egg, which had money in it. And Ms. Sympathy Hudson, she found the golden egg. And then, we had our Easter bunny that was with us at both properties. And we had, that's Ms. Alicia, she's hiding eggs. And so we were hiding eggs at the property, at the Towers. We had the farmer who was chasing the bunny around, so. Farmer out there. And so there's a resident, they're out looking for their eggs. And you could tell our bunny was in rare form, so she was, she was hopping around. And so there's more resident out looking for eggs. Yeah. She's hiding eggs, our Easter bunny. And then, Ms. Lilian Cook, she found the money egg at the Towers. And then, we're hiding eggs at Trent Court, in the playground area. So we were working hard, looking for the eggs. And we had a little fella who showed up early, and he didn't wanna see where we were hiding the eggs, so he decided to sit there with his eyes closed while we hid the eggs. And there's all the kids out running and searching for the eggs. Oh, so we had, we had a great, a great time while we were out. And this little fella, Mr. Lawrence, found the money egg at the Trent Court hunt. There we are. And then there we are, it's happy Easter phone from all of us. So we had, we had a pretty good week, and sharing with our residents.
Awesome.
Great job.
Thank you.
So the next thing we have, that's all I have to share with you all tonight. I have Mr. Varner, he's here with us tonight to give you an update on Trent Court and our development process, where we are. So I'll let him share with you.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Glad to be here and to be able to share with you. I think we're making a lot of progress. Things are moving forward. We're basically, the point we're at at this point in working with the Alderman and Alderman Bingo, thank you for your continued support of these last few months, it's been tremendous, and we really appreciate it, it's been able to expedite things and move the process forward, since you all have gotten involved in that process, as well as the city manager. So again, what I wanna be able to share with you all is, because of the last meeting that we had, and so again, I come from city, so I'm learning Alderman more often than I'm used to saying, so please excuse me, that I use it interchangeably, okay? But at the Alderman meeting that we had, and we presented the MOA in the discussion of Trent Court, from that time forward, Tiffany has had consistent meetings with the city manager on a bi-weekly basis, and been able to move that process forward. The MOA, Jamie has facilitated the MOA to get it to a point where I think all parties should be accepting of it. I know that the city is currently reviewing it, have reviewed it from the, I think, from the city attorney's standpoint. So we're just kinda waiting on the final approval of that and the signature authority to sign off on it. Tiffany's also sent it to Shippo, Renee, the representative at the Shippo office, is out in the office right now. So we're waiting on her to get back, for her to be able to review it, sign off on it. And so at that point, the three signature authorities for the MOA is the Housing Authority, the city, and Shippo. There are, there are some other groups that we're coordinating with, in particular, HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission. So just to make you all aware and keep this in mind, regardless of the work that we're doing on the HUD side, there's also still city rules and regulations that we must adhere to as well. So even though we had to go back, because, as if you all remember, and I'm sure Tiffany shared this, HUD approved the demolition of the hundred and ten units there in Phase One with one error. And that was, they didn't complete an environmental review. So we had to go back and get the environmental review done. So even though we're going through that process now, the coordination with the city, with Urban Design Ventures, who is the, because the city took on the responsible entity, pardon again, thank you, Alderman Bingo, for your support. Because again, and I wanna bring this home, without the coordinated support on both ends, we wouldn't be able to get this stuff done. So working in a silo, the flood happened in twenty nineteen, fast forward to twenty twenty. So if we continue to work in a silo, we can't get things done. And so through a coordinated effort, we've been able to make a lot of progress in a short period of time. And it's because of that coordinated effort that's going on. But the other major party to that, even though they're not a signature authority, is the HPC. And so luckily, Tiffany and I, some months back, went to the HPC, did a presentation, and just in general discussion. So the HPC has a forum where they have an open general discussion of projects, and there's nothing formal about it. You can come each month and just talk about your project. And then, when you get more to the point where you wanna make application, then it goes to a separate part on the agenda. So right now, we're just on the general discussion part with them. And so I bring that up, because the city, regardless of us going through the EA process and the process with HUD, the city still controls whether or not, which is good, it's not a bad thing. But I just wanna make you all aware of it, so that way you understand the four steps. Once we still go through the process and get HUD to sign off on the approval of the demolition of those units, we still have to come back and work with the HPC to get local approval to demolish those units, which it should be, before any units like that in a historic area should be demolished, it should go through local approval process. So we're having a great initial discussion with them. They're meeting the first Wednesday of every month. Right now, we're currently on their agenda, in the general session part of the agenda, not in the formal part, but just in the general session part. But we can continue, again, work together to make. To make sure that we're sharing with them what our goals and objectives are and they can share with us where their concerns are. Based on the progress that we're making and so we've had great discussions with them. We had our first one, uh, two weeks ago, uh, on that first Wednesday of the month. Had some discussion around the plan for the demolition of those units. Now, there's one point of contention and one point of contention for everyone and I respect that. But I want to share with you all why the differentiation between what was talked about, what was potentially planned. And where we really are. So in twenty sixteen, the community was lucky enough, and I say lucky enough. And blessed enough because every, a lot of communities apply for a CNI grant, which is the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. So a lot of communities nationally apply for that. For New Bern to be awarded a CNI grant is a big deal and, and so a lot of major cities apply for. And so for a city the size of New Bern to be able to get a CNI planning grant. In my view is, is a big deal and is a big feather in you all's cap that in twenty sixteen you were able to, to get that. Now, the next step of that is naturally you got to get a CNI implementation grant. And the city is again, moving forward with that process. But in that CNI. Initiative, one of the things that was talked about, and so lo and behold. In twenty sixteen, the plan was to do what? Demolish Trent Court. Now, God works in mysterious ways, I'm not saying it's a blessing, I'm just sharing with you what happened. Twenty nineteen, y'all had a flood, okay, and so in twenty sixteen, the plan was to demolish the entire development. And come back as Mr. Moody. And, and so again, God works in mysterious ways. Mr. Moody being here is one of the things that we all are focused on and that is what? A mixed income development and that's really what we're talking about. I spent thirty years plus years of my life in public housing and community development work. I will be the first to tell you that in thirty years I don't like public house. So most people find it interesting because I think it's a flawed process, okay? I think the, it was well intended, but it didn't work the way it should have worked. And so while they had the right intent, it, it was flawed and so now, fast forward sixty plus years. We have an opportunity, well, a lot longer than sixty plus years because the Housing Act was nineteen thirty seven, okay? And so, so, so fast forward, you, you, you see where we are. And so the reality of it is, is, is with those programs, now we have an opportunity to go back and, and fix it. With those units being designed to be demolished based on the CNI and then fast forward the flood. We have an opportunity to raise the development phase one and phase two. And come back to the original plan of the CNI grant and then now subsequently based on the flood. To demolish those remaining units in phase one and then ultimately we get to phase two. But in the CNI, one point of contention with HPC is there was a discussion. And I think it was a compromise, good, bad and different, it is the reality. That one of the buildings would remain outside of Charles Taylor. One of the buildings, the residential buildings would remain, that was based on that CNI grant. So those of you who aren't no real estate, you know that you don't take the highest and best land use. And not utilize it for redevelopment. Well, the property that was designed in that CNI to be kept. Is in the, is in the non-floodplain area, which makes, from a business standpoint, no sense to keep. A, your highest and best land available to keep a building that technically would be non-functioning from a residential standpoint. From a historical perspective, I get it. So I just want to make you all aware. Our goal in our application and discussion with the HPC right now. Is to request a complete demolition of the entire site. Not keeping that building that was discussed in twenty sixteen in the CNI. And then that way we can do a redevelopment plan and lay out a plan for redevelopment consistently throughout the entire site. Now, if we get pushed back, then the goal is, okay, if we get pushed back. Then where can we make a compromise? Because everything is about making a compromise. So if there is a way to make a compromise in talking with the consultants and talking to the architects. One of the things that we laid out initially and it's in the CNI. Is to create green space from Lawson's Creek up to Walk Bellamy. And so if you look at where the office is and then if you're facing the office on Walk Bellamy. You have the old office and then to your right is two of the buildings, residential buildings. So one of the things that we put in the MOA is to create. Placards throughout the communities, markers identifying the historical nature of what Trent Court has meant to this community. And then taking those bar releases, the icons on the buildings and taking some of those as well and create. Some form of a statue there in the green space area that recognizes as people walk through. And working with the city and, and others as we create this CNI master plan for implementation. Creating a green space that we create something from a historical marker standpoint. And taking the three different bar releases and so what we're proposing is to create something and, and work from an architectural standpoint. And create some form of a statue that shows all three sides, like in a triangle. Design, but it'll show all three sides of the bar releases, so even though the bar releases. Will be used in any other new building sort of built back onsite or offsite, so we plan to store them as part of this MOA. The other part of it is, is to be able to create some form of a statue that recognizes the, the significance, if you will, of those bar releases. And we can demonstrate that for the community. So, so then let's get to the building. If, if for some reason the HPC pushes back on the complete demolition, so let me say that's option one. Is to do a complete demolition of the entire site. If we get pushed back. Then the, the compromise would be, can we take one of those buildings that is in the floodplain area? Uh, that's going to be green space and leave one of those buildings there. Leave the first floors and open airspace, so if you take the windows out, those things, so the structures there. You take the windows out and it can still be historical and then you can still have the second floor as some type of functioning use. And it's above the floodplain area and so we're having some discussion around that. And being able to help facilitate it to see if that will be a acceptable compromise if we get to that point. Where they push back on completely demolishing all of the buildings, but as you can see. We, we're thinking through everything, we're being very thoughtful and deliberate about the process because we recognize the historical nature of it. Now, so then you say, well Reggie, but why not on the highest and best use? Well, here's the other piece, the units that are in phase one, they're easy. They're flooded, they're not occupied, they're not inhabitable, so therefore that's easy. Phase two is we're applying to HUD for the demolition and let me hear me. Even if you all were doing this under the CNI, but get the flood for a minute. If you just simply go back to your CNI plan and now fast forward and you want to go implementation. In order for you to, to fulfill your desires as a local community to demolish the units at Trent Court. The only way you can do that under HUD rules and regulations is you get a classification of obsolescence. Which means those units no longer have a significance from an operational standpoint. So what we have to do is we have to get what is called a PCNA, a physical needs assessment done of those units. Based on today's cost and values, we determine that it costs more. If to try to rehab to a higher standard those units than it would be to build brand new units. So HUD through the RAD program is what everybody's using across the country. Is they're using the obsolescence rule to demolish those units to be able to come back. Well, if we argue that one unit needs to stay. In the phase two area, then I can't prove the obsolescence. Because you're arguing to keep a building in that area that we're proving that is obsolete. And so that's where we're trying, yes sir, hold on one second, so that's where we're trying to help facilitate that process now. Granted, I know that you're looking at it from a historical perspective and being able to do that, but again. When we look at the redevelopment and we're laying out those units. If you take a look at phase one and then look at phase two. The other issue that we're up against from a timing standpoint with FEMA. Is FEMA is looking for us to provide them a redevelopment plan for those replacement units. Because you take Lawson's Creek all the way up to Walk Bellamy. And you've committed because of the floodplain, you're committing to make that green space. Then because of the diagonal of design of the phase one floodplain area and then phase two. The only, there's a small portion of available land of the first phase demolition that we can put units back on. But we're planning to use the entire site for redevelopment. And that redevelopment is not simply just public housing. Congregating public housing solely by itself doesn't work. Mixed income, so again, mixed income, public housing typically is targeting. Those individuals at thirty percent of AMI or below, which is your area median income. Tax credit properties focus on sixty percent of AMI. And then HUD programs, your CDBG, your home monies, those programs that the city gives as an entitlement. When they talk about affordability, they're then focused on eighty percent of AMI. Well, as you heard, Mr. Moody, when you look at the working class people in the community. Those individuals between sixty and eighty and then the second phase between eighty and a hundred percent. Are primarily your people that's being left out of most markets, not just in New Bern. But they're being left out across the board. So what the goal is for the entire site there at Trent Court. Again, this is your plan, not mine, I like it because y'all already put it in place, so it makes it easier for my job to help facilitate it. The plan was already put in place that it would be a mixed income redevelopment that had. Those individuals at thirty percent of AMI, those people at sixty to eighty percent of AMI. And then those people at eighty to a hundred percent of AMI, which then gives you. A completely turnkey mixed use development of residential units in the community. And it also enables us to then work with, what's the name of an organization that does the vouchers? So the other thing that it requires, which is a good thing, is those vouchers. That there's a potentially about forty-two vouchers in phase one that's still remaining. That we're going to work with Ten Twenty River Zone to project base back to the development. Which means for those that are not necessarily familiar with the terminology. Project base means it's not tied to the tenant, it's tied to the unit. So with forty-two units of X number of units are built back on site. Whenever a tenant comes and goes, it doesn't really matter to us. Because the subsidy is going to be tied to that unit for the life of that unit. That makes it economically feasible and that's what makes it work from that perspective. A tenant-based voucher is where a tenant can take it anywhere they want to. Project base is where the assistance is tied to the unit. What, what was originally intended was that when those units were built back. And so good, bad and different, what was the name, Carolina Avenue? It was supposed to be done with Carolina Avenue, good, bad and different, I'm Johnny Come Lately, I can't fix that problem. But what was supposed to happen is some of those vouchers that left. In phase one were supposed to be tied to Carolina Avenue. They're not tied from a project base standpoint. If a tenant has a voucher and goes in and wants to live, that's different. But it was supposed to be where the redevelopment was supposed to have some of those project-based vouchers tied to Carolina Avenue. We're gonna, what's, what's remaining that didn't go to tenants, so let me be clear. But those hundred and something tenants that left after the flood, who chose not to come back. Those that got tenant-based vouchers were sixty-something. Those that didn't take a voucher and moved on their own or moved in back into either Trent Court or Craven Terrace. That left what HUD committed to this community for those replacement vouchers. Still forty-something vouchers in this community that is not tied back to anything that you all have done. Cynthia has talked and had discussion with Tiffany that we can be able to get those vouchers back committed. Where they should be and where they belong. So I want to be clear with you, they belong to you all. But because the tenants chose not to take those, they're really in. They're in their portfolio right now, but they really were designated for those Trent Court residents, okay? So I know I've gone over a lot with you and sharing that, hold on Mr. Monty. I, I want to go to this gentleman first because he, he had his ear, but I, I just wanted to finish my discussion before I took questions. So that's why we're focused on working with HPC, we don't want to go before then with a formal application. Until we've negotiated and worked with them on the processes and the procedures. I like to win the first term and I don't like to keep going back over and over again. So what I like to do is sit down with people, have discussion with them, let's dialogue back and forth. Where we can know that when we finally make a formal application to you. Everybody's on board, we're getting it approved, opposed to make an application, get denied and then we spend. Four or five months going back and forth over something and if we just sit down with each other in the beginning and have just dialogue. Then when we make applications, we know we can get, get it approved. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Just a couple of questions, I'm assuming that the, the negotiation of leaving the original building there was with. The Historical Preservation Society?
So, so believe it or not, it was with, so initially it was in the CNI plan. Where it came from somewhere. The discussion that we had, and I know this is, is open, the initial discussion that we had. There's, we didn't get much pushback at the initial meeting. There was discussion about it and we're going to have more discussion at the May meeting. But we didn't get a lot of pushback on the potential for the full demolition from the initial discussion with HPC. This was initially put in the plan back in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Fast forward, we have an open discussion.
So if we have to fall back though and it stays with one building. Is i- if it's for historical purposes only, then why do we have to worry about? It actually being an operational unit? I mean, if we are going to do it as a historical issue, we'll just leave a building up somewhere on the property. And, and, and give it the historical recognition that it needs, it doesn't have to necessarily, I'm asking. It doesn't necessarily have to make, I mean, to me it's ridiculous to open the first floor up and then we'll run out the second floor.
Be used as some functioning type of, whether it's.
Resource center.
Resource center or something, not, not residential in any name.
In that case, if we were to do that, then we have to, we, we can't leave it in the floodplain then.
Well, we can, and so that's, that's the thing, we can, you can leave the building there and so that's not the issue. Technically, we had three, you had three options originally, you could go back to the original buildings. Under FEMA and you could take the original buildings and take the FEMA money. And fix them back the original way, which makes no practical sense knowing that it's going to flood again. FEMA says, we're going to give you this money, you can go to the existing units, fix them back up with one caveat. If it floods again, we never going to give you money again, but that makes no sense to. Build money, I mean, build them back in the exact same way. What we're proposing is even on the land that's still within the floodplain. We will follow the base elevation level requirements of the city. And make sure that there's eleven feet before we build the first residential unit. So then there, there's parking there and then there's residential. So that's why the compromise would say, okay, well, if we're going to take a building and leave a building, then let's leave a building. That's within the floodplain area, not in a non-floodplain, because when we look at redevelopment of the site. We need the most valuable land that we can to build back potential residential units.
All right, last question, I heard you talking about the little small area of land after the phase one of the demolition. That we're actually able to build back on. That we're actually able to build back on. My concern is, do we really know? Where are the tenants going to go when we start entering phase two? At the market it is today, nobody can find a place anywhere. So my concern is, we have to somehow. Get the tenants and the community to understand, we're not pushing anybody out. There's got to be a plan that is public to let everybody know that. Everybody's going to have a place to go.
Absolutely. And part of the process that we're going through with HBC. And then we'll be going through with the city and the MOA and everybody else is exactly to your point. We're creating a phased approach to demolition and redevelopment. And so phase one goes first, which is the flood units net. Based on that design. We're not, so what we've done is we said, we've done an overlay of the floodplain area. We've done an overlay of the CNI plan. And we've done an overlay of the existing units to be able to look at where we can build units back. How we configure, configure that units, because the first building is, if you will, it's going to be elevated. And so as you go towards from Lawson's Creek, you got green space, then you're going to have an elevated building. And then you're going to start going back down again. So as you go towards the community, you're going to. De- design buildings that complement as it goes into the community. Those are non-floodplain area units where the elevated units will be in a floodplain area. So then you're looking at a three or four story building, which will comp, which will encompass X number of units. So those families that are in phase two, if you will, here's the, here's the good and the bad. The good is the families that were affected in phase one are gone. So there's no relocation of them at this point. So you don't, in essence, worry about them because they're already situated. So when you build this new elevated building, the first round of people that you put in, in this elevated building. Is coming from your phase two units. So then therefore, once you move those families in. You got the vacant units that you're looking for to then demolish and then build some other units. And then move those remaining families there. And then you got the backside of the property that available for the last phase.
I, I just don't want us to forget that the general public really doesn't know. Or probably doesn't understand, nor do they attend these meetings. And I know that they're probably the residents out there the same way, but because I hear it all the time.
Sure.
I, I'm, I'm hoping that as we go through these phases, that we're in communication. With all the residents, uh, just so they'll get a very good understanding that. It is not our intent, nor will it happen, that we're going to take Trent Court out. Everyone will have a place to go before we actually, that, that's, that's the message, I think. We need to make sure.
And we.
Goes out.
We, we will do that and, and, and one of the things that I've always been able to successfully do. Is make sure that the residents and the community as a whole, you know. And I always tell people, I speak both sides of howl, if you will. One hour is the tenants to make sure they understand their rights and their value. And the importance of making sure we take care of them, but also making sure on the regulatory side. That we check the boxes and making sure that we do this in the right way as well. So again, everybody understands it. And so, and everybody adheres to it, compromises with it and works with us on it. We're not going to make sure any resident is moved. And the first thing we do at every meeting. Is the one thing that we remind them is do not move. If you move and you move on your own, you've given up your rights under federal relocation laws. So we make that known at every meeting. Whatever you do, please don't move. Now, inevitably. Somebody going to move. And then twelve months from now, they go call Alderman Bingo. I'm, I'm just being honest. So no matter how, as I always tell people, the best laid plan will go awry, okay? And what happens is we tell them, ma'am, sir, do not move. We're going to track you, you, you're going to have somewhere to go. And then they move and we build this nice brand new building that they really like and they drive by and see. And the first thing their cousin says is, well, I mean, didn't you live there? Were you entitled to one of those units? And then they call Alderman Bingo and say, this Askew won't give them a unit. That's what happens. And so we have to, we have to be honest. And that's why I'm mad, because if nothing else, I've been doing this my whole adult life. We have to make sure that we talk to people, we understand it, we communicate it among each other. So when we get those calls, we know collectively, we all have tried to do this the right way. And just like anything else, you have to sometimes sit and say, ma'am, sir. We explained it to you, you made a choice, there's nothing I can do, you can apply.
I understand, but from the moment I got on this board, there has been so much talk about Trent Court. And there's been so many different talks and different ideas or plans or, and, and even in. The city elected representatives are, don't understand what we're doing. Uh, I've heard comments irrationally, uh, that obviously the NOU that we did. They don't know what the future plan is, and this is only my understanding, and, and that's maybe why they didn't vote for it. So there is a lot of confusion about two thousand and sixteen, then the flood and now what a plan is. And it's got everybody really worried. And I can understand that concern about people and. As we go through each little phase, though, I really want to make sure that everybody completely understands what we're doing. That nobody's going to be misplaced. And, uh, that, you know, every step of the way, that, that's all I'm at.
And I, and as you can tell from my discussions, I'm very thorough, at least I try to be. And have those discussions with the Alderman, with you all, with HBC, with all partners and everybody that's involved. And so we do have to be patient with each other and it is a learning process. And so something that comes second nature for me is, is we just talked about the obsolescence. For somebody to say, well, we want to keep that building on this location, and Ridge, I don't understand why. It's my job for you all to make sure I articulate that in the right way to Alderman Bingo to say, here's why. In order to get the approval from HUD, we got to be able to meet the obsolescence requirement. And so to a layman, they don't know that. Nobody knows that. They just know what they want, what they see and how they want it. It's my responsibility to work with you all and work with them to make sure that we check all of the boxes the right way. So I hear you, I hear you loud and clear, and I can assure you, we're going to make sure that we communicate effectively with all parties.
Thank you.
Alderman Bingo, you had one before.
You spoke of the forty-two units. Were they the forty-two units that from Craven Terrace?
No, sir. It was the remaining forty-two. So of the. Hundred and eight, it's hundred and ten is in second phase.
Okay, okay.
A hundred and eight, I'm sorry, of the hundred and eight, uh, forty something of those are remaining. Of the original hundred and eight from the Trent Court flood. That didn't get assigned to, yeah, they were unused, they didn't get assigned. But, so where you all understand, when the, when the flood occurred. What HUD does is gives tenant protection vouchers, the full hundred and eight to, uh, Twin Rivers. Then it's up to them to give it to those particular tenants. If they didn't utilize it, they still have those forty something vouchers in their portfolio. We're just going to be going to them, asking them to reassign them back to what we build back.
It's, it's sort of ironic, forty, forty-two were the number that went to the Gaston Avenue folks, if I remember correctly. So, uh, I was going, wait a minute, they're gone.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Okay.
This is, this is related to the, to the unused, uh, hundred and, of the hundred and eight.
Four questions, four comments. First question, I was on HBC, because I know this pretty well. So there's a one year time on the COA. So you're telling me, which is a certificate of appropriate issue you need to tear down. So I'm not sure I understand, you're going to go in and ask for a COA on the total two hundred and eighteen unit demolition?
No.
Just on the hundred and eight?
Correct.
The twelve buildings, okay, that's where I misunderstood. So the only demolition you're going to be requesting at this time are the hundred and eight units. Okay, I, I misunderstood, because you said the entire.
Yeah, we, we, we have to provide to them and to everyone our redevelopment plan for the site. That it's a phased application.
The only essence of demolition is a hundred and eight. My comment about that is, you know, I've been taken by what Wilmington did with their. Public housing at the waterfront, because that public housing looks exactly like our public housing. And what they did is they sold off those units, which were then developed by developer into high end condos. Now, why couldn't you take one building to save it? Have that in your highest and best use, even take it there, because then it saves the building, it puts it to use, you're making it residential. Some developer may take it and do that and it preserves the building and they can retrofit it as they see fit.
And Alderman, thank you for the comment, and we will take that under.
I, I just think that would be the better thing to do and, and, because you don't want anything in the floodplain then. You're talking about an open building maintenance, people in and out of its security, I could just see the nightmare.
And, and, and so as a, as a collective, we, we, we're going to look at all opportunities and avenues. And then bring it back from a community perspective and look at it. However, the one thing I will tell you is if you look, so just, this is a FYI. If the authority keeps ownership of some way, form of the land. Whether it's through a land lease or future ownership or part owner of the development entity that redevelops. Then as Jamie knows, there are other steps that we can go through. When we get to the point of selling those and they look at it as high end condos, then to your point, if I took that building. No, no, but I'm just using that as an example, uh, then we have to do an RFP. It has to be appraised, it has to be sold at fair market value. Because you can't take that property, sell it for fair market value for it to be used as high end. From that perspective and be able to sell it to a developer at a discounted rate. You follow me? Now, if it's, it's going to be created as affordable homeownership, that's different, but from a market rate. So I'm sharing with you, all of that is available. It's just, again, I hope you understand, is my job is to help you all as we talk through these things. Here's the consequences, here's what we can do, how we can do it. We can do anything as a community we want to do. We just got to know the whys, the hows and the consequences. And, and if, and once everybody signs off on that, I don't have a dog in that fight. My job is to help you all facilitate it, you know, what's best and highest for the community, whatever that means is.
I want to understand one of them.
Just, just for the benefit of time, I just want to call our attention, ask a rule. The conversation is a presentation to the board. And, and so we, we just want to limit the, the amount of conversation that's happening right now. Because this is just meant to be a presentation, we have an entire agenda and we have closed session afterwards. So.
You're doing a great job.
Really, really appreciate it very, very much.
Okay. Okay, a couple of questions. I want to make sure I totally understand about the, a new plan.
Yeah, because I'm here tomorrow. Okay, thank you all.
I have just a few more things just to share. Uh, everyone received the invitation for the Carolina grand, grand opening on, um, April the twenty-first at eleven. And then also just to introduce our new staff, Ross Coordinator, Ms. Sympathy Hudson. Uh, she's with us tonight and she'll, um, be preparing a report to give to you all shortly. Um, as she gets activated and, uh, she started on April first, so. Uh, we're excited and thankful to have her, uh, with us. And then the last thing I just want to share is that, uh, next month at the May meeting. I will, uh, actually be at the executive directors conference, uh, for a training. And I will, uh, be sure to zoom in with you all and, uh, Ms. Meadow, she'll be here to, to run everything, uh, for you, but I'll be, uh, through Zoom.
Awesome.
That, that's all I have.
That's a great report and good presentation. So, the next thing on the agenda. We were in towers of Paris.
Good afternoon. The total units is a hundred and six, can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was so quiet. Unit occupied eighty-seven, vacant nineteen, oppo- opposite. Rate is eighty-two percent, move in zero, move out four. In process twelve, approved six.
So in process is her number of applications she's processing and, um, she's approved six applications.
Okay, so does that six, would that six come off that nineteen?
Yes, as soon as we get, uh, the units ready for the number. That's good.
Okay. Tenant account receivable, charge twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Received twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars and twenty-nine cents. And that's the all, the residents that overpay. Monthly unpaid is two thousand seven dollars. That's the all residents that's not paying, just in case y'all want to ask them. Tar rate a hundred and seven percent. The total unpaid balance is eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents.
So just so you understand what we tried to do here, uh, the monthly amount that she charged, uh, we have at the twenty-five. And some of her residents pay more than what they're supposed to, so that they can have a, you know, balance, just in case if something happens and they get sick and they can't pay. So they tend to pay more than what they're actually should pay. And so for the month, she had around two thousand that was unpaid and those are for residents that just didn't pay at all. And then that unpaid balance is a rolling balance of all unpaid amounts for the whole, um, entire year, um, from. You know, people with, uh, issues with COVID that just haven't paid, so that's what that unpaid balance is.
Can I ask you a question real quick? Uh, where it says pending termination seven, how many months do they go before we actually start the eviction process?
So right now we have some that have been dated back for over a year just due to COVID, but since recently we can't file on them. Those are, um, seven people that we have and this month is the first month that we actually went to go file, uh, for a non.
Was there, did we discuss one time where we were able to, they were supposed to be able to pay certain amounts of money? Is, is, these people are, are just not buying into that program at all?
They just refuse.
Okay.
So I'm hoping even though we do file, I've asked, um, the property managers, will we do, um, go to court if they want to. Agree to a repayment agreement that we do that with them, um, because I think they just are not.
Well, they get caught.
Yeah, they're not thinking that we're going to do anything. So now when they really are in the courtroom, maybe they'll say, hey, I will pay extra. So that's my hope. All right, Ms. Simmons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Work orders outstanding request seven. And we have, uh, maintenance on medical leave, I just want you to keep that in mind. Request received thirty-four, completed twenty-seven, pending repairs seven. Pending parts zero. Police reports, total calls of twenty-four, fire report one.
Any questions?
All right, Trent Court, Trent Court report.
Okay, uh, Ms. Minor is out today, so I will give her report. Sorry, I'm moving a little fast. Um, so for. She has a hundred and ten units, ninety-two are occupied, she has eighteen vacancies with a eighty-four percent occupancy rate. She's had two move ins and no move outs and she has four, um, applications. Uh, that are in process and those applications haven't been, uh, approved yet. Um, they have several that they're, uh, proud in for review that they're working on right now.
Um, they have several that they're a proud in for review that they're working on right now. Um, and then for her tenant accounts receivable, she's charged um for the month of April twenty-six thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and eighteen cent and received twenty-four thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cent. She has a monthly unpaid balance of nineteen hundred and thirty-nine um dollars and thirty-six cents. And her tar rate is ninety-two point five percent. Her unpaid um balance is at thirty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and forty cents. And she has thirty-four residents uh for non-payment.
Do we normally see the unpaid balance amount?
No, that's
This is different.
Yes, I added that because it was a question with the numbers not adding up. So her received and her unpaid actually add up, but she has that rolling balance.
And we talked about that last month. It was
They're trying to make it easy.
Not as I would have put it down, but that's.
Um, and so for her work orders, she has three outstanding requests. Um, she received thirty-one requests for repairs and twenty-eight were complete, and she has three that are pending repairs. And there were twenty of police calls at her property. And no fires.
Police calls less than the towers.
The same situation with the non-payments.
Yes, that um is a balance that is a rolling balance from um that are there for current tenants that we still have there. And so those are families that we can't fix for um payment on those.
Um, I know that you guys just uh did the uh the, you did the roof on the units uh at Trent Court and you did the bathtubs uh updates and and those kinds of things. Do we have any other major projects happening at Trent Court currently?
Those were just the major things. We have some um AC units and things like that that um tend to go out a lot. And so uh we're working on um finding out the best need as to whether we need to replace or repair those.
Okay.
So that's another major issue there.
Appreciate it. Are we on to resolutions?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm excited for this one.
I guess you are.
Our first resolution is to add a waiting list. Preference for homeless individuals um at both of our properties, the New Run Towers and Trent Court. Um, what that means is if we had a family that has verified as being homeless through uh one of our local agencies, uh, because there's certain requirements that they have to meet to be considered homeless. And so if that agency verifies that they are homeless, then we would select them from our waiting list first. So our waiting list is set up by date and time of application. So if someone um, you know, applied in January and they were not homeless, and we had someone apply the beginning of April and they were homeless, we would select that um person that applied in April before the January person, because they have um been verified as being homeless. So by adding that to our um waiting list, um, it gives us the ability to be able to help these families um faster than others who aren't homeless. And HUD has a long definition that um someone must meet in order to be determined as um homeless. So it's it's really saying that if we had someone that was, you know, sleeping on their grandmother's sofa, they would not be considered homeless because they have a fixed residence. But if we had someone that was at um a homeless shelter, then they would be considered homeless. And they would um have a preference on our waiting list.
So in essence, what this is saying is that there there we'll have a waiting list of people that are homeless. Once they're verified as homeless, then they will be able to move into one of our properties under a HUD deal, or how would that be paid?
No, it's the same. It's the same process. It's just the the way we manage our waiting list. All of the um requirements as far as paying the rent is still exactly the same. It's just that we are required to maintain a waiting list. So when people apply, we put their names on that list. But if someone was verified as being homeless, we would select them before we would select someone that wasn't. Everything else still remains the same.
Okay, so we maintain two lists, a homeless list and a regular list.
Okay.
In essence, it's tweaking it from a time, uh, from a time orientation to a circumstantial or orientation where if the situation is dire, that person, that person's need would be elevated on the list. In other words, yeah.
I was hoping that we would be able to, this was gonna say, oh, we're gonna have one or two of our apartments, that we're gonna be able to say that if we have someone that is desperately in need and the shelter can't take them, whatever we can.
That definitely allow us to do that, because I've had so many requests to do that.
We had, I had one over the weekend.
Yeah, this is the alternate to that, which we are allowed to do by HUD regulations.
Well, have we been sheltering homeless? Have we been offering units to homeless folks?
We can't because they have to apply just like everybody else to go through the waitlist process. Now, we can if they apply and they are verified as homeless. Now, we can select them first. If this resolution is approved.
Okay, and they have to be homeless. I think the resolution said thirty days.
I believe that's what the res- resolution says. Do we have a motion?
I have, I will give the motion to approve um the resolution zero four one eight zero one as written.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes in unison.
So the question's been raised as to whether or not the chair has a conflict of interest, um, because presumably this could impact his nonprofit. And there is no legal conflict of interest, um, you know, unless you wanna discuss a personal financial interest in the
There is no personal financial interest because it's a not-for-profit and there is no owner, and therefore I don't get a stake in it, so.
We'll we'll make sure that's reflected in the.
I appreciate that and the question. Because in that, yes, inevitably it will be raised, so I appreciate it. All right, do we have another resolution?
Yes, we do. We have our independent audit services, and I will turn it over to Ms. Livingston.
Okay, um, I will be covering the resolution for the independent audit services, zero four point one eight point zero two. Uh, under recommendations authorized and instructed to execute independent audit services with Ravino and Company chartered. Uh, Ravino has over forty years of experience working in both private sector and the Public Housing Authority. This firm has experience working in public housing, housing trust vouchers, capital fund, section eight reconstruction and tax credits. And I missed all the, if anybody wanna read all the uh accounting acronyms and and their published dates to set them up. Um, on page two, uh, they will also be covered um, two of our five oh three, five oh one C three entities, uh, Transformation Venture Capital, TBC, and the Better Vision Housing, BDH. Um, the additional services for the auditor would be the FBS, which is the Financial Data Schedule, DCS, Data Collection Forum, LGC, two oh three Local Government Commission. Um, there are approximately ten, the ABHA Authority, meetings of the ABHA Authority were requested, including month before commission meetings via Zoom or in person dependent upon yearly physical cycles. The agency uh received two responses, the press proposal Ravino and Company charters scored a total of ninety points out of one hundred and a preo scored a total of ninety points out of one hundred.
And this was because the other company we had just wasn't.
They um decided to no longer work with the agency and plus um their um contract was up and it was time for us to go out for.
Done this anyway, okay.
Let's make a motion that we accept the uh resolution zero four one eight oh two, the independent audit services as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, second.
Ma'am, okay.
All in favor, do you have discussion? Yes.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Powell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Have a passed resolution. All right. What's the last closed session? We are going into a closed session. We do have some personnel issues.
Okay, I make a motion if we move into closed session. Our personnel matters.
I will reflect the statutes.
So, Brandon, you sitting around?
We're back in the open session. I think the only thing less left is adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I hear it. All in favor, say aye. All opposed like sign. We are adjourned. Oh, my goodness. I'm gonna tell Bishop he's never allowed to leave again.
I wish there was a way we could do something like that, because we had a family over the weekend that they were calling me that apparently.